Lisa, are you on? Lisa, are you on? Lisa, can you unmute yourself and tell us you're here?
Hi there, this is Jenna. I am one of the managers of the Big White Barn. I think Lisa was having trouble connecting. I'm texting with her right now. I'm not sure if she's in the meeting or not, but the one that says Big White Barn Yoga, that's Jenna, not Lisa.
Can't unmute yourself. And you can see yourself, that's a good start. Are you looking at your iPhone or your computer? Okay. Alright, so you can't use your computer. Hang on a second. Yeah? Hang on a second. You have to unmute. Alright, you should have a pop-up now.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes. Okay, we're in business. Okay, hold on, let's check your show.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, thanks.
Can you hear us?
Hello?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but you're really, really distant, and I have my volume all the way up.
It's very, very loud here, so hope yours is gonna work well.
I can barely hear you, let me... Can you see me?
No.
Let me...
Don Mitchell, can you hear us all okay?
No, I can barely hear you.
I can hear, I can hear you guys fine. Sorry, I'm a little bit late.
Lisa, you might want to get on the phone with one of your people and just talk through them, or hear through them. There you are, we see you now.
Okay, but you still don't, I still can barely hear you, that's so weird.
Everybody else can hear us that's online right now.
Well... Do you want to try it this way, or do you want me, do you want me to FaceTime with Erin, who's there?
Well, I'm a little concerned if you can't hear what's going on, I'm not sure how we'll have a conversation about this.
I can, I can hear it, but it's really, it's like, it's distant.
Can you hear well on the phone? Okay, why don't you put that on, on... Why don't you put that on your speaker? Hey, hang on a second. Okay, see if this works, how's that work?
I can hear you, I can hear you very well.
Okay. Continue.
Alright, I guess we're in business. Okay, so the single item on our agenda tonight is the Big White Barn, and Lisa Clark is here for that. Typically, the way we begin our consideration of applications, Lisa, is that we'll ask the applicant for just a summary of what you're proposing, and the planning board may have questions, or ask for additional information, and we'll get into a conversation about the application, but following a brief summary, if you could provide that for us.
So, I've owned the barn since 2011, and we've had a wellness center there, pretty much, pardon?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Since, very early in 2012, and we went to people who have different philosophies than the people who first founded the building, and, which is trying to be part of the community, and trying to trend lightly on the planet, and trying to provide really quality wellness services for people in the area. And so, we've been very stable with our renters, and we have not advertised for renters because we feel strongly that the best people are people that we know, and that we trust. And so, recently, an office on the second floor opened up, and Erin, who's here as well today, wanted to rent it, and she is gonna do some spiritual counseling, and she also a hairdresser, and she was hoping to see six or eight clients a week in that space. She uses biodegradable products, and, you know, it's a solid, and so we were, what we were hoping to do is put a thing in one of the offices, because most of the offices are not, don't have plumbing for a thing. But then...
Okay, so the reason that this is on the planning board's agenda is that presumably, back many years ago now, there was an approval that was issued for a medical practice in the Big White Barn. And I know there are a couple of departments there as well, and so our assumption going into this was that those were, there was a list of approved uses in the Big White Barn, most of them were related to the medical practice in some way or another. I know there's a yoga studio, and there had been physicians' offices and so forth, massage. And so, this particular use, the beauty salon, the hairdresser, is a different use, and the refilled land use ordinance requires that any new uses or changes in uses, approvals that have previously been issued, must come before the planning board for consideration. So, the beauty salon is a different use, it's a commercial use that hadn't previously been approved, and so that is the planning board's specific interest in this application. I had asked Chip, I want to put this out there principally for planning board members, because it's a little unclear, you know, what to do about this right now, but I had asked Chip to send a copy of the earlier planning board approval to all the planning board members, so we had the background on this, and what was discovered is that, well, Chip couldn't find a notice of decision, nor could he find minutes from the meetings where this approval was supposedly discussed. So I think what we'll need to go do is go back and take a closer look at that, and figure out where that is, when that actually happened.
So, I've been telling you, I've been telling you that it happened in the gym in the elementary school, because I remember, I remember being there with Martha Bentley, who did the process with me. I think it was in, so we did not buy the building until we had the approval to do what we needed to do, and I believe we bought it in 2011.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about, Lisa, and it would make sense that it was in the gym at the elementary school. Originally, that property was zoned as rural residential, and those types of uses would not have been allowable, and so there had been a request for rezoning to rural in order to accommodate the uses. And a rezoning requires town meeting approval, and so that's the piece, I'm sure you're remembering, that it went to town meeting there, and it was approved by voters, so that...
We were at some meetings in the town hall, I think Mary Dennis was on the board at the time, and I forget who else, I know we were at least at a couple meetings there, too.
Yeah, and there are some old meeting minutes that reflect that, they were toward the end, if I remember correctly, 2011, and there was discussion about this, but what we were unable to find, when we realized that it was, it was missing, we were unable to find the actual written decision of the planning board on this matter. And there are some minutes that talk about conditions that would be imposed on the project, but what we didn't find was, again, a written decision, which is something that's always issued on planning board decisions. So, and the reason I raise it is, you know, I just want to be sure that everything that is happening there currently has been formally approved. And if it hasn't been, for some reason, we would need to go back and take a look at that and make sure that it was cleaned up. But I think...
Wait a minute, can I just clarify what you're saying? You can't find the permit for what we're doing there now?
Correct.
And if you can't, and if you can't find it, then you gotta go through and make sure, then what happens?
Well, in some way, I think we, I think we need to do a little more digging first, before we decide exactly what path we're going to follow here. But my assumption, you know, the whole, the whole way through this conversation, and, you know, and for years, is that the medical practice was certainly approved, and there's a lot of, there are memos and minutes and so forth in the files that indicate that that happened. And so, and I know at one point, there was a question that came in from some member of the public about what was, you know, what was happening at the barn, and Stephen Paculsky was the head manager at the time, and I know that he responded, and said the town really doesn't have any question about the medical practice, you know, it isn't approved use, and so, you know, the assumption is, yes, it is approved, but I know that there are some, you know, some, some activities that are going on there now that follow the medical practice. And so I think what we need to do is to understand, you know, clearly what's there now, and just make sure that it has been approved in some way. Just to make sure we're all covered in that regard.
So, for this particular question, it sounds like you're not gonna be able to do anything with it until you figure the rest of it out?
Well, you know, for planning board members, I do, I do have a possible option that's gonna put on the table for discussion. And I'll do that in just a minute. So, I don't know, Lisa, if there was any other information you wanted to provide to us, or if that's pretty much it?
Well, it's pretty straightforward to me, I mean, I don't, that question for me certainly needs asking, it really seems like, you know, again, we're asking to put a sink in an office so that, so that, and I think, I think, I don't think it's a hair salon in the way that you're talking about, it's not a hair salon, we're not asking anything of a hair salon. We're asking for, well Erin, why don't you, why don't, Erin, Erin, what you mentioned, also Erin Moon is there, and she is the person who wants to open a business there, so Erin, why don't you tell us exactly what you're gonna do? Because again, I think, I think, I think the idea that it's a hair salon is very different than what it's really gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I do hair, I'm gonna be trying to do more of a holistic approach to it, being more spiritual and empathic, more calming and whatever, so yes, I will be doing like some shampoos and some soaking, and maybe some upper body massage, and whatever, all the products I do use are on the more natural side of things, vegan, plant-based. The filter requirement for me to be licensed anyway, I have to have all the backflow on my plumbing, and what that does is it prevents anything from going into the ground. And even that, I try to be as clean as possible with all of my things. So, I think with your hair salon, there's been getting all these chemicals and blowdires and noise and whatever, I'm trying to do more of a quiet experience with this whole thing, which would fit right into the thought, and more of, kind of like when you do go to get a massage, it'd be more of an experience like that.
I'm sorry, I didn't know your last name.
Wayman.
Hello, Ms. Wayman. I'm Peter Vickerman, I'm a board member, I've, how many, if this goes forward, how many clients would you anticipate seeing in an average week?
Honestly, I'm thinking maybe two a day, four to five days a week, minimum, and each client doesn't actually need that much water, maybe a couple minutes per person. Very simple, for the hair part of whatever.
Possibly ten, ten a week?
Yeah, at most, yeah. I don't do any chemical services like perms and things that you wouldn't want with fun in a hair salon, it's more of a holistic type of thing.
So you also talked about doing some spiritual wellness, Tom?
Yeah, so I also do like intuitive reading, and I have recognized things for permits or certificates, whatever you wanna call them, so I could integrate that in with that as well.
Okay, those are different clients than the hair?
No, I'm gonna try to do it together, and see how that goes, I'm not really sure how all my clients will, they can jump into another, but that is the goal.
Any other board member questions? When you come back, if you have any questions, if you do come up.
I have a question, the history, Paula, you could answer. I'd say that in 2017, the planning board granted a conditional approval of, for the sale of yoga-related items in the same building. Were those conditions fulfilled? Have there been any issues since then?
I think that's been okay with Jenna, Jenna was the one that came to the board to make the thought.
What was your question?
Well, I just wondered, I was actually directing to the chair, but perhaps you could help too, is, since the 2017 notice of decision by the planning board allowing the sale of yoga-related items in the White, in the Big White Barn under certain conditions, have, in fact, are those being sold? Were the conditions satisfied? Were there any problems, and like that?
No, I don't think so, it's very, very small. Jenna, are you still on her? Jenna?
Hi, this is Jenna, the one that was there in 2017. Um, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, but yes, we ended up, just, we do very small amounts of retail, essentially just, you know, a massage client buying a bottle of essential oil, maybe once or twice a month, so we don't end, we never ended up having like a full-on retail space, it's more just having the ability to sell retail products to clients when they need it.
And Peter, when, you know, when I read this, what Peter's looking at is a 2017 planning board notice of decision approving the sale, the retail sale of yoga-related items at the Big White Barn. And, I mean, this is six years after the likely approval of the medical practice, the yoga practice and so forth. And I think that this was issued, Jack's doing this, I was, I was missing that, that whole thing in August, I know this away. But this looked to me like an application to add this particular activity to the activities that had already been approved, and, you know, the big umbrella activity was medical practice, and, you know, related medical activities of the building. So this, you know, was another piece of evidence in mind, that there had been another decision prior to, because this looked like a revision to that, that earlier decision. But in 2011, you know, if you read back through the history, there was a lot of CEO turnover, there were like two or three different CEOs involved, and I think we need to do a bit more research to understand a little more clearly, you know, how that all, how that all played out. But for planning board members, the, you know, the thought I had, the proposal I have, is that, you know, my assumption is, we don't have a piece of paper in front of us, because, you know, it couldn't, it couldn't be located, but my assumption is that this was approved, the medical practice, the overall umbrella activity was approved in 2011, or around that time, anyway. And one, one path we could take with this is to make that assumption that was approved by the planning board, and move forward with this proposal that was just summarized for us as a revision to the earlier approval, and it adds this single new activity to the minutes. And then we can go back and see what we can sort out in terms of history, to make sure that it's all clarified. You know, I would, I would hate to hold up our consideration of this, because, because the records in the town office need to be sorted through.
Well, I just want to say that I can remember approving it, so...
You do?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear that.
I'm wondering, go, go those around.
So, can I just say, I have a land use permit application in my file, and it's trying to... Let me look, I don't actually see a date on that.
Yeah, it's not necessarily the application we're looking for, we're looking for the results of that. Yeah.
Let me look through all my paperwork, I have no idea that it doesn't have, I mean, I also know that we really, I mean, I I don't think we would have bought the building, because I remember, I was in India with my family, and Martha Bentley was also one of the original persons.
Yeah, there's a lot of...
Called me in India, said it had gone through. So I know that, I remember that clearly. And I just, I don't know, she probably don't want to wait for me to go through all this, but...
Well, I am looking for, you know, for comment from planning board members, if, you know, if you would be comfortable, amenable to going forward that way, or if you have another suggestion for proceeding.
So tell us again what your suggestion is, please, sorry, I was looking at the...
That we move ahead with your application, and add, you know, for adding this new activity as an activity that's approved at the, at the barn. And we would treat it as a revision to the earlier approval, but we don't have the written approval in front of us at this point. And that's the piece that I think we need to go back and just make sure that everything is in order, and we're clear about what's been approved at that structure.
Okay, and then, and then if it turns out, I'm sort of, if it turns out that you can't find it, then this gets out of curiosity, what happens?
I don't know yet, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
About planning board members, thoughts?
I think the use certainly fits the scope of what's going on at the White Barn, for sure, I mean, you're not, it's not a hair salon by any means, more, more your hairdresser, but you're not even gonna be specifically only doing hair, it's not like people are only gonna go there to do hair.
And it's kind of an assignment, only one person at a time, it won't take up any actual stock, or, you know, it's simple.
Frankly, I think people do have water use than, than yoga, really, than a yoga, like, no, I wouldn't know, but... Both.
No different than washing your hair?
Right, right, that's what I mean, right.
Yeah, very normal.
And, you know, I would also suggest for planning board members that, you know, if we, if we make the assumption that this was approved use, and I believe it was, and Dawn recalls that it is, we would be treating this as a revision to an approved plan, and that is, the standard for that is on page 24, it's article 6, 681. And that lays out the process for revisions to approved plans. And there are a couple of different ways, and you'll probably all remember, we've done it in a couple of different ways, depending on how complicated the proposal is. There is an option for considering and taking action on a revision at a single meeting. And you can find that in H1F, which says, it says... It talks about a change or expansion of a use, except for a change that is substantially similar in nature to the approved use, and that the planning board determines will not result in increased or additional adverse impacts. And so, the difference there is whether this application is treated as a new application, where it would have to go through the full process of public hearing, and a butter notification, and a couple of different meetings, or if it's treated as a minor revision to the existing approval under the circumstances that I just read in H1F. So that is, that is an option. That, and, you know, I would remind everyone that what we usually look for in terms of revisions is additional impacts, are there going to be greater impacts, you know, for instance, if it was, you know, a 20-seat hair salon that was expecting 100 clients a week, we would be looking at, you know, it's clear that those would be additional impacts, such as water usage, parking, and so forth, and so those types of proposed revisions, with those types of impacts, we would typically run those as new applications. But the option is there to do it as a minor revision if the board so chooses.
Can I just add one thing, that there was not gonna be any more traffic flow into the building, because we'd be replacing one tent for another, and in fact, probably Erin will have fewer clients than the person within their report who's a truck clerk, who has probably six, eight people a day.
Dawn? But my, my only question really comes down to the water usage, and whether there's really any increase. There's, this has obviously got to be a reach field, that for whatever water use curves now, I don't know what, I can't remember what we approved for that, and whether there would be any difference in flow. I guess that the way you described it, that that would be insignificant, but that that's the only thing that spirit is found out.
And Chip, I think you mentioned that you'd been engaged on the plumbing end of it as well, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, the plumbing permit didn't come until they had the use permit, so it might not be a problem.
Hey, other, other thoughts from planning board members on that?
Um, I'm comfortable with the idea that this meets the criteria, the standards of that subsection, that this would be a change of use that is substantially similar in nature to the approved use or uses, which seem to encompass not just, although they maybe started with just a doctor's office and become health and wellness, maybe more broadly.
Right.
And it seems like, yeah, there was referenced, there was an original, looking at the 2011 minutes that there was mention of, of two, two doctors, two medical care providers being there. So I don't think the intensity of use for what is being suggested here would, in terms of water use, would be very different or more, or more impactful than what has already been approved. You might get.
So one, one thing I would mention, Lisa, for, for you in particular is, you know, it sounds like there has been a fair amount of shifting over the years in terms of, of who your renters are and the specific activities that they're engaged in. If we do locate a notice of decision, what I expect to see is that things like the medical practice, the yoga practice, health and wellness types of activities in general were approved at this facility. And that those are the kinds of things that were covered by some kind of blanket approval. But if anything different, and, you know, this was determined to be somewhat different than what had been in there previously, anything different that comes in, you know, in the future would also need to come under the, the approval of the planning board. So I just wanted to, to mention that at this point, so that we work on the year of them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's always been our intent to keep it a wellness center. So it's something that would have to happen for us to change that path. And I, and so what you're, you're saying is that if we, if we, if we have a new tenant who is doing something that's not wellness related, we'll need to come back to the board without leaving?
Yes, in all, in all likelihood, you know, if it's some kind of commercial activity, for instance. It's very possible, you know, I can't say with certainty I totally knew what it was, but it's possible that it would need to go through a revision process like we're doing here now.
Okay. And do you have, is there, is there a, do you have some kind of definition that we should go by? I mean, because like, the thing that, we've been very comfortable all along that the people, I mean, first of all, there, there, you know, we have mostly massage therapists and counselors in there. And we've been very confident that the people who have been renting for us, from us for a very long time, are wellness oriented. But is there, does the town have some kind of definition or some kind of, something that we can go by? I mean, because because we, because when, when, when Erin first came to us to rent from us, we just assumed that it was okay because we, we listened to what she was going to do and felt like it was consistent with what we were operating the barn. I guess that sort of was driving this question.
And I, I think that your question, Lisa, is related to some extent to what exists in the records with regard to what was approved. And that would be the place that I would look to get a better understanding and definition of, you know, the activities that were approved. So I think we need to do that additional research and make sure that we're all clear, that's all.
Okay.
So are there any other questions or comments, anything further from board members?
I understand that I am also comfortable going through this as a minor revision.
Okay. Is there any, any concern about moving forward as a minor revision? Anyone? Okay. Well, that being the case, I would take a motion if someone would like to make one.
I'll move that we approved the application for the proposed activity and that finding that it is in keeping with the wellness activities that have been previously approved.
Could we define the proposed activity so the future education will know what that is for? So if you could define that in your motion, that would be helpful.
The proposed activity of spiritual counseling and hair. I want to see if I can get it right, because I think it was hair, I think it was.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all those in favor? And John? That's a yes? You're on Zoom, so you need to speak.
I'm muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Okay, all right, let's see, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa, and we will get back to you about the rest of it. I think a little more research into town records is in order so that we can sort through this and we'll, we'll get back to you about that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I think, I can't remember what it was, we had a, what, what month, but it was July? Because I would have been July, June, July, or August 2011. Would it, would it have been the meeting?
No.
I, I don't think so, because the.
So that they didn't have their, whatever.
The rezoning piece happened later in the year than that, but we'll, we'll piece that together. We're not going to be able to sort it tonight.
Okay.
But I know that something happened. There is some, some July activity in the records, but I don't think it was a decision. But we'll, we'll sort that and we'll get back to you to talk about it a bit further, make sure they're clear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Can we go ahead and put some thinking, or do we need?
Just go, I gotta get the permit signed and paper, we'll do that.
Okay. So I'm going to be away again for a week, so can I do that Thursday morning? I, I would love to get it all done, I mean, get it all together so we can get moving on, because you asked.
Tomorrow will work.
Okay. How much do I owe you and what do I need to do?
Call me tomorrow.
All right. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, bye.
So going forward, I am all set. I don't want them to do anything on my part, her department.
Stop the person in hand, make sure that he does get it.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, that's a must for me to even be licensed doing it, so.
And so there, there will be, there will be a written, it'll be a simple one, but there will be a written approval that reflects the planning board's decision tonight and then, or with Chip, you know, the sink installation and so forth. That's kind of a different matter.
Yeah, no, that part's all set, because I believe the car is all, has an appointment and everything, that's all in it. So I just have to either pay or increase the pay, whatever, we'll figure that out, but.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. Good night. The door lock?
No, you're absolutely no.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't know. Don, you were, you said you were a member of the meeting?
I remember doing a site inspection, I remember the rezoning and then the rezoning, yeah.
Yeah, the rezoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where it died.
Yeah, well, well, we'll have to sort through it and make sure it's, it's cleaned up. If it isn't, it's something.
What was, how do you want to open it? There was a yard shop near there, wasn't it the same building, was it?
The used bookshop.
Oh, the yard, that, no, that was in Babe Weaver's house, across, across the road, yeah, that was doing.
Yeah, okay, good. So I would wonder why the whole record L or health and wellness. I know people who love to, then regardless part of health and wellness, but I.
Mental health, yeah. Okay. We have two sets of minutes, the September minutes. And I had sent out to everyone a few suggested edits. And so that's the copy that I would like to focus on. So any comments or additional edits to either of those? On the agenda said August 12th and 26th, but it's in fact September 12th and 26th.
I would, I would move the acceptance of the, of the minutes of September 12th as proposed to be amended as amended by the proposals set forth by the chair.
Second, any discussion? Not all those in favor? And John?
Hi.
Thanks. And the second set is from the 26th. Is there a motion among those?
I wasn't here.
I do want to ask if there's any updates about the question that you've been posed.
Yes, yes, we'll talk about that after we deal with these.
All right, I'll move the approval of the minutes of September 26th as amended by the chair. Second.
Okay, motion second, third, we discuss them. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks. Okay, so the solar project. At the last meeting, I raised the issue about the possible, the project constantly triggering the commercial industrial district zoning process. And the timing was such that was not discussed when they came in for a free application meeting. There was a modification made to the land use ordinance following that free application meeting and the issue hadn't been raised with them subsequently. I was really uncomfortable not raising it because it really struck me that it was something that applied. And the reason that the land use ordinance was revised to include infrastructure was because of our experience with the Jakarta solar project in large part. So I did have a lengthy conversation with Clinton Collins, the town attorney, about it. And we, we explored a number of, of different facets of it, but ultimately, her conclusion was, yes, it does apply. So, you know, I, I am concerned about the timing of their project. I don't want them to be impacted any more than is absolutely necessary to conduct that process. So the other thing I did was to have a conversation with Eric about whether or not a special town meeting might be possible. So that, that because the, the commercial industrial district, it's a rezoning essential. It's a slightly different kind of rezoning, but it is a rezoning, and it requires town meeting virtual. And so I had that conversation with Eric. He thought that that might be a possibility. Obviously, the sideboard would have to make that decision. But he was certainly willing to, to talk about that and to try to figure that out. And I was, we wouldn't be ready, obviously, for a town meeting in November. That's often when the special meetings are held. But, you know, I was thinking possibly January or February, so that's what Eric and I talked about. And as I understood, the company, when they put forward their projected timetable, it sounded to me as though, you know, if we went ahead and did it that way, that the project likely would not be a significant impact. I can't imagine that they would be ready to be up and running until next year anyway. And they still have, I think they still have some dealings to conduct with CMP. They still need a DEP approval for the decommissioning process. And so there, there's still work that they need to do. And our site review process, even if we weren't doing the rezoning, really wouldn't be, you know, I, I can't see that we would be finished until probably, you know, November, December at the earliest. You know, we'd have to do a public hearing. And so it doesn't strike me that, you know, if we're able to do that, that it would have, have a terribly significant impact on the, on the timetable that they'd be operating with their. What it does mean, however, is that they're going to need to put in another application essentially for the rezoning process and to cover the standards that are in Article 9 of the ordinance, which is where that commercial industrial district zoning process is laid out. I met with Chip and Eric last week because I wanted to make sure that the three of us have a common understanding about, you know, what this thing is and where we are in the process and, and how we'll go forward. And what we had agreed at that meeting was that Chip would set up a meeting with the applicant and I had offered to be part of that so that we can walk through the standards with them and make sure that it's clear, you know, what they need to do to address the standards in order. So that's something that, I don't know if you talked to them yet about dates, Chip, but.
No, I talked to him and his primary concern is that there's some kind of drop dead date tomorrow.
Drop dead.
For some decision, he wouldn't come forward with it, so. I will, you know, call him back tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Give him the, so there would be nothing we could do concurrently. They'd have to be done first one, then the other.
Well, yeah, I mean, this, this one is a little bit different, obviously, because they've got their entire site review application together and they've actually provided it to us. And so, you know, I would say that there are things that we can do to move these two pieces along concurrently. But ultimately, what the process calls for is the rezoning piece first and then the site review approval, if that's how it turns out, that would come subsequently. But I don't think we need to sit back and not look at the site review piece. I think we can, you know, move forward with the review of that. Not issue the decision until after the rezoning, but I certainly wouldn't encourage people just to set it aside. I mean, continue your review of that.
It's, it's, it could be better done in the fall than.
Yeah, 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 we could certainly talk about doing that, getting a site and so forth, which might be, you know, something that we would want to do for the rezoning as well, so. So that's kind of where things stand. And, you know, I am, you know, really concerned about trying to make this as timely and as simple as possible for them because the whole issue did not come up until after they had their site and application together and, you know, I am concerned about that, so. you know, I am concerned about that, so. But I think we, you know, there are ways that we can move through this. Expeditions like that's how it looks at this point.
Is there, is there any reason why we couldn't have a meeting that addressed the approval of the application at the next meeting following the the town, town meeting?
I think that's possible, John. I mean, you know, we can't make any kind of a a decision on the site review application until the rezoning is, is completed. The only thing I'd say about that is that we will need to hold a public hearing on the site review application. So, you know, we need to officially find the site review application complete and we need to hold a public hearing and then we could make a decision following those two things.
Could the, could the decision be made at the same meeting as the public hearing or would it have to be after?
In theory, it could, but I wouldn't plan on doing it that way because, you know, particularly with a project like this, it's it's, it's uncertain, you know, what kinds of comments and questions might come forward at the public hearing. And I, I wouldn't want, you know, the, I wouldn't want the public to believe that, you know, a a, a decision had already been made before we had the public in. So I want to make sure that we have that opportunity for people to comment and ask questions and that we've considered all of that fully before we move to the decision point.
Yeah, sure. Is there any, is there any thinking that or, or I guess maybe I'm, I'm wondering, i- is it appropriate to ask, ask now? Does any member of the board have concerns about the rezoning? I, I mean, I know that we're gonna have to get into that, but at least at this point, i- is anybody thinking that there's gonna be a problem with having this rezoned?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I have other concerns. After reading the minutes, I wasn't, I missed the meeting too, but after reading the minutes, I went back looked through the, our land use ordinance again and I, I don't take issue with the legal interpretation by the town's attorney here, but I, going forward in future matters, I wonder if we shouldn't be amending our ordinance again to avoid this result. Because we're pervasively regulating, we're working solar installations through our ordinance, our solar ordinance. And, and we're not only that, but the, which also, there's also, of course, the state law, the state statute of de-commissioning. So solar installations of this size are being pervasively regulated as it is. And, and the idea that it doesn't, from a public policy point of view, I don't understand why an applicant goes through that process, she also has to go through a rezoning process. I don't understand it.
What, what, what happened with this one? I mean, this is the only one that will ever happen that way. What happened with this one was that we went through the first solar, the big solar project, the Sincara project. And at the time, we did not have the solar ordinance. And Jack and I had argued to the town attorney that the commercial industrial district process should apply and she said, no. It doesn't apply for various reasons. And so we were left with, with that not applying and not having a solar ordinance at the time. So in the wake of that experience, we immediately amended the L U O to include infrastructure so that the, the CID rezoning would apply to solar projects. But then subsequently, we decided that a solar ordinance would be a good idea. So now we have both. And so this particular project was, was, was caught, was caught in that and the timing was the problem on, on this one. You know, the timing of the ordinance change and the timing of the effective date of the solar ordinance. So, you know, I talked with Jack and actually you, you and I, John, had this conversation as well that, you know, we should, you know, after we're finished with this one, we, we should have a conversation about and I, I think this is what you're suggesting too, Peter, that we should have a conversation about whether or not it makes sense to make some adjustment at this point and, you know, perhaps put an exception in the, the CID districting for large solar projects, given that we have a, a comprehensive solar ordinance at this point, which we did previously. So I agree completely, you know, we should, we should look at that and talk about it. And there, there could well be nothing to be gained from also requiring the CID zoning in addition to the solar base.
No, I, I just, I, I was mainly coming from, from the standpoint of you know, if we're thinking for this particular project that you know, it's going to be it's going to get approved in, in terms of the rezoning, then I just hate to see them held up more because we're having to make this decision when they didn't seem to know anything about that.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with you. And that's why we're, you know, we're trying to see if we can do the special town meeting and now, and trying to come up with a schedule that's as, as friendly as possible. I
The job to address your question, we don't really know what's there's a public hearing. We can't predict or prejudge like happens. So, as you know, from all those letters to the editor last year, the kind of a journal, some people think that solar arrays are horrible. And they'll, people may show up and oppose the rezoning for that reason. That they feel rushed, whatever, and
No, I, I, I don't have a problem with that idea at all, you know, I just, I was just thinking, you know, you know, we should fast track it, but but you're right, you know, we don't want anybody to think that some, some decision's already been made, regardless of the public input, so.
But I think it's unfortunate, this is, I think this is unfortunate because it's been, to have to, well, for the reasons we discussed, it's an over, somehow this particular application's been caught in sort of a time work problem.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, hopefully they'll understand.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that we would all agree that, you know, we'll do the best that we can to make this move along as quickly as possible. So that they're not, you know, their schedule isn't impacted negatively and we'll do what we can to move on.
That makes sense.
Anything else on them?
I'm not impressed.
Okay. So Chip and I will meet with them and go through the standards in the, you know, in Article nine and make sure they understand what they need to provide and then we'll we'll get that back to the planning board as soon as possible. The planning board would have to consider and make some sort of ruling on the rezoning request. And then from there, it goes to the select board. So that would be the next, the next case of this stuff.
I just wanted to bring up about, about the ball field.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You were spoken to me about playing role as a liaison which I agreed to do, but it hasn't worked out so well so far.
And I, I was gonna mention that to you because, so for, for everyone else, the, you may be aware that the select board set up a fairgrounds working committee to explore future use of the fairgrounds and how that's all going to play out. And they they selected a membership. There are, there are at-large members, there are representatives from certain committees in town. And Jerry Bly had called me. Jerry Bly and Stevie Angeles are heading up that effort. So Jerry had called me and said that the, the committee was interested in having the planning board and a couple of the other boards participate as executive members on that committee. So they wouldn't be voting members and they wouldn't be members that are taking any kind of a position on the plan or advocating in any way, but more to serve as liaisons, in, in our case, back to the planning board. So I had spoken about to Don about possibly doing that. And Don, you had sent that email to me. You weren't able to make the site visit and the meeting this week, ever. And so I didn't get back to you about that, but I was gonna mention it tonight. I spoke to John about picking that up and he's agreed to help out. And so I was thinking maybe what made most sense would be that, you know, maybe the two of you could collaborate and and maybe between, you know, the two of you, we, we could get the meetings covered in some way. So if, you know, if you weren't able to attend, John, we do it or you know, and you could work out how that was going to happen, if that, that works for both of you. I called Jerry. I haven't spoken to him, but I left him a message and told him that. I haven't, I didn't hear back from him. And I asked him specifically, John, to put you also on the distribution list for those meetings in addition to Don.
So there was an email from Jerry's day.
Oh, there was, okay, I didn't
I didn't see.
Okay.
It was just a reminder about Thursday's meeting.
Okay, I forwarded your email to John, so he said that.
So you know about Thursday's meeting, John?
Yes, yes, I'm planning to go to that. But, you know, I'll refer to you, Don, whenever you want to go, just let me know and I'll stay home.
Yeah, I don't know how long this is gonna go for, but between us, I think we can probably have it.
I, I don't remember the schedule, but I, I don't remember it being, you know, a terribly lengthy process, less than a year.
I, I do know that they were looking, one of the things that they were considering at the site visit, I guess it's where to put a basketball court and so they're looking at the fairgrounds, they're looking at the town beach and they're looking at the high school campus, oh, the, the, building for campus. As apparently they look at all three locations and that's one of the things they're gonna, you gotta, you gotta get to think on Thursday.
And, and for everybody else, I mean, you know, it, it's probably obvious, but depending on what the decisions are about use of the fairgrounds, it's possible that their plan could require a plan. Or not, you know, depending on what comes from it, so. Okay.
I'll be glad to help out. I just I'll go Thursday and Don, you just let me know what, what to do after that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Anybody? Chip, did you have anything?
Well, we hope to get the other inclusion area district on its agenda. Be nice to know when they can wait and agree.
Has, what, what Chip is talking about is John Cushing's proposal to build more storage units on his property where he built the earlier storage unit. And that would cumulatively, that would bring the square footage to greater than five thousand and that triggers the commercial industrial district process. And he's completely aware of that. But what I was waiting for was his application that addresses those standards in Article nine. That's what we need to see first. And so I don't want to put it on the agenda until we have that in hand. So.
This is the area network, the depot.
Right. It's, you know, it's the site of the old, what was the old church and that's storage and then he's got the building down behind that is storage that we had approved sometime ago. And that property is currently zoned village. And the storage units would be an allowed use in the village, in the village district. And that is one of the requirements of the commercial industrial district, that whatever the proposal is, whatever the proposed activity is, has to be consistent with the allowed uses in that district. Okay. So, okay. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good night. Yeah, twenty-fourth, next scheduled meeting. Well, unclear it's gonna be on the agenda, but we, we shall see.
I don't think I'll be able to.
So what's your, your decision and the